Good evening. All right, we can do a little bit better than that. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. My name is Matt Dunbar. My day job is I am the Vice President of External Affairs for Habitat for Humanity, New York City. But I have the honor and privilege of helping to facilitate the Religious Facilities Task Force for the Manhattan Borough President's Office. It's been an amazing time so far, and it's near and dear to our heart. And because you are here tonight, we know that the topic is also near and dear to yours as well. So we want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is our second public meeting of the task force. The purpose primarily of the task force is to really explore issues facing faith communities that own religious facilities and properties of all different types throughout the city and may be facing a wide range of different challenges, including, you know, potential issues with revenue, capital repair needs for buildings, issues related to landmarking and preservation, or for those situations in which many of you may have experienced in which developers come knocking on your door looking to purchase your buildings and develop them. So the task force has been convened to really explore a lot of these issues, to bring in and identify various resources that could be available to the faith community throughout Manhattan in dealing with these variety of issues, and to know where to go and where to get information and get support for wherever you and your community may be. So the first public meeting was about a month ago, and we've had about four sessions so far. We're coming close to the end of it, in which we will then really be putting together an action book, which will have a lot of these resources, as well as some policy recommendations. So we're thankful that you're all here tonight. We want to hear from you. We want to hear your stories, your thoughts about the topic and the issue. And if there are any areas of policy that you want to highlight for potential policy introduction or conversation, we would love to hear that as well. So I'm pleased to introduce my colleague Stephanie Chan from the Manhattan Borough President's Office, which will talk a little bit about the logistics for the evening.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Chan. I'm an urban planner with the Borough President's Office. Gail is on her way, so I just want to give some logistics before then. If you do have comments that you would like to submit through email, we have a dedicated email address for this. It is rftf@manhattanbp.nyc.gov. We also have all of our previous presentations from the task force, as well as the live stream of our last public meeting online on our website. And you can dig through the resources that we have. They're all very informative. And if you would like to submit a paper comment, you can do so by picking up the half-sheets at the table outside. You can just hold them up at any time, and a member of our staff will collect them. And if you also would wish to speak, please mark the top checkbox, and we'll pick up those comments. And I guess we'll start with our first speaker, who is Barry Weinberg. And for right now, we do not have a time limit for speaking. And if you can, please go to the podium. Thank you.
It's a dangerous thing to give a Community Board Chair no time limit, but I will keep myself brief. And I'd like to thank the Borough President for convening this task force. It is addressing an issue that we in Community Board Nine have had extreme concerns about over the years, and it continues to be a priority in our district, which runs from 110th to 155th Street on the west side of Manhattan. We are a board who has seen the loss and development of both historically significant, architecturally significant, and significant in the services that they provide to the communities of facilities owned by religious institutions in our board for, not just in the recent past, but decades. Recently, Child's Memorial Temple Church on Amsterdam Avenue and 147th Street was purchased and demolished. This was the site of Malcolm X's funeral. It was the only Christian church that would take Malcolm X for the funeral, and the eulogy was given by Ossie Davis. That has been demolished and sits as a vacant lot. And also, the developments on the Cathedral Close, at the Cathedral of St. John the Divine on Amsterdam Avenue from 110th to 114th Street, have also troubled our community greatly. And then, this however, also goes back decades. So Temple Benet Israel on 149th Street between Broadway and Riverside was transferred and became a Baptist church, but was bought by a developer, torn down, and the church can only longer afford the structure, redeveloped into a new building with the church-given space on the ground floor. And this is a pattern that we see frequently in our community. And I want to actually take a moment to thank someone I see in the audience, Michael Henry Adams, who has been a tireless defender of the cultural, historical, and aesthetic assets and gems in our neighborhood and in Harlem broadly. But I want to not only address the fact that many of these structures should have been landmarked but were not, which reveals, I believe, a very strong impact of racism and classism in what gets landmarked in New York. But also, I want to tell everyone who is here from a religious institution that Community Board Nine is eager to work with our churches and religious institutions to come up with adaptive reuses for these facilities, that if there is architectural or historical significance, preserve the facilities. Or if there is not, but there is a significance in keeping the space available for community use, because churches are not just there to be held as worship spaces for their congregants, but they serve as spaces in the community where people can come together, where people can be civically engaged and care about others in their community. And that, too, is valuable to Community Board Nine, thinking specifically of the Wilson Major Morris Center up by St. Nicholas Avenue, which has been closed for many years now and is a loss of a space for our youth and for our seniors. But I want to tell one last story to demonstrate our willingness and our capabilities as a board to work with religious partnerships. And I want to tell the story of PS 186th, which is on 145th Street between Amsterdam and Broadway. It was owned by the Harlem Boys and Girls Club, which is an affiliate of Convent Avenue Baptist Church. And when it was transferred from the city to the Boys and Girls Club in the 1970s after the school closed, it was to be used as a community center for the Boys and Girls Club. They did not have the money to renovate the structure, and so it sat vacant for almost four decades. It had trees growing through it. It was falling apart. And in the 2000s, when the church and the Boys and Girls Club wanted to lift the deed restriction and tear down the building, which was a historically significant building from the turn of the 20th century, and build luxury housing with space on the bottom again for the Boys and Girls Club, the board said no. And we worked with the Boys and Girls Club to partner, to find a developer who not only preserves, but actually restored, PS 186 to its architectural glory, and gave the Boys and Girls Club a space on the ground floor. And the rest of the building, through subsidies from HPD and capital contributions from the Borough President and City Council, became 100% low-income affordable housing. That is the type of creative and adaptive reuse that we want to continue to work with our religious institutions in our neighborhood to facilitate, so that we preserve these spaces as third spaces for the community to come together and engage. We preserve the rich architectural legacy of West Harlem. And we also preserve a religious institution's ability to grow and take the space it needs in the ways it needs in the 21st century as their congregations and missions may evolve. So our office is always open. We are trying to proactively reach out to institutions in our community, and I hope that others around the city will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Quick question for you, sir. Is there any, like, policy recommendations or anything from the Community Board that the Community Board has talked about that you wanted to make today, or was it more for the storytelling and the aspects of education and connection?
I might suggest that there are a number of sources of capital that are required to make some of these rehabilitations and transitions viable. Obviously discretionary funding is one, but occasionally HPD will set internal limits on the acquisition price of real estate that it's willing to finance affordable housing at. It may be worth having a separate, more flexible standard for cases where there is architectural or community facility significance to these projects. And then, you know, I don't know that there's another policy recommendation I have, other than that, you know, people get creative about the sources of capital and the development partners that they reach out to, which is something that we do on a case-by-case basis at Board Nine in Manhattan.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Peter Cook.
I'm Executive Director of the New York State Council Churches. We represent about 7,000 congregations around the state, including many congregations here in New York City. We strive to help congregations across the state think more creatively about how they do mission in their community, to address impediments that might get in the way of doing that mission, and also encouraging creative use of property to help our congregations be a blessing on their community. And we're really pleased to work with Bricks and Mortals, which is a nonprofit here, started by Judson Memorial Church, which also helps faith communities imagine better use of their property, the Interfaith Assembly on Housing and Homelessness, as we advocate for affordable housing, and also the Interfaith Affordable Housing Collaborative, which provides pre-development money to congregations that might like to use their property to build affordable housing. So my colleague Kate Toth will be speaking from Bricks and Mortals, but let me just share with you a few observations. In our city, and most certainly in Manhattan, the demand for real estate is immense. I don't think that comes as news to anyone in this room. But that demand means that property often goes to the highest bidder, which most likely has little or no interest in building affordable housing, and instead prefers to build high-end housing or mixed use of housing and business use at market. In this economically pressurized landscape, the price of surrounding housing goes up as these new luxury developments begin to appear. As the price goes up, people are priced out of their houses, or are a rent burden in that they spend far too much of their income on housing, or they're forced to move far away from their homes and jobs to places which may be cheaper, but not by much, or which are more limited in transportation and other services. Our economy suffers mightily when we remove low- and middle-income people out of the picture, or when it costs too far too much money to live in their neighborhood. Our economy flourishes because people of all incomes can live and work in the city. Congregations are significantly large property owners in the city. By some estimates, they might own 30% of the property in the five boroughs. And many have owned that property for a very long time. Unfortunately, many of these congregations are shrinking and do not have the resources to fix up their property, which is a burden on them and their neighborhoods. Some of those congregations have the added burden of being designated as landmarks, which limits their ability to garner the finances that they need to expand the use of their property outside of the guidelines. Congregations at their best are mission-minded. They understand that they must put equal amounts of zeal into serving their membership and building relationships with people outside of their four walls. To use a Christian axiom, if we seek to lose our life for the gospel, we will find our lives. But if we try to save our lives and serve ourselves first, we will lose that life. So in this overheated real estate market, it's sometimes hard to know how to be mission-minded. Some congregations discovered that they could monetize their property by selling a big portion of it to a market-rate developer. They can take that money to fix up their congregation's building and ensure that their ministries continue for perpetuity. And some have indeed made that choice, and it's hard not, it's hard to be too critical of that choice. But in the process, such congregations can unwittingly contribute to gentrification and can help to overheat the housing market, displacing the very people who might attend their parish. They also lose their most precious marketing brand, which is that they are mission-focused. Other congregations might like to monetize their property but use it for more mission-appropriate purposes, like building affordable housing. Many times, however, they must sell at a price which would make it hard for a potential affordable housing developer to make a project pencil out. There's also an added burden of being legally required to derive the maximum amount from the sale of the property. And while there is some allowance by the Attorney General's Office, we acknowledge this rule is in place to protect congregations who might be tempted to undersell and diminish the value of their asset. But it also limits the congregation's ability to be able to use their building in a more mission-centered kind of way. We want congregations to fix up their property, improve it, expand it, but there are challenges, which means that there need to be better incentives in place to encourage congregations to use their property in a mission-consistent and neighborhood-friendly manner. So my four points are: congregations must never, ever, ever enter into an agreement with a developer until they've thought about their mission, until they've done an appropriate assessment of their property, looked at their zoning, and have good legal counsel who represents them and only them. And I would really recommend that HPD, whenever they are called, emphasize that ad nauseam to any congregation who is looking to develop their property for affordable housing. Second, we need more money that makes it possible for affordable housing developments, which would not otherwise pencil out, to be built. We need some mechanism to make it possible to build affordable housing when the price per square foot is astronomically high. We have a compelling interest to offer that deeper subsidy to ensure our congregations are, and the neighborhoods they serve, are economically and racially diverse. Third, we must look at rules and regulations and laws which encourage congregations to use their property in a way which is mission-consistent. This could mean, for instance, having the city make it possible for properties, especially landmarked properties, to sell their air rights if it is for a socially redemptive purpose and does not further displace people in their neighborhoods. Second, to find ways to lighten up some of the restrictions on faith-based properties to receive public funds. This often involves setting up a separate 501(c)(3), which has a nonreligious purpose, which makes sense, but sometimes it's just so restrictive that it doesn't allow for any expression of religious piety, even within that 501(c)(3) context. Third, we might also want to sit with the Attorney General, see if there could be changes in the statute to help congregations which wish to further their mission by not garnering the maximum amount of money from their property. And those are three ideas, but we really want to engage you in these policy kinds of questions as we try to incentivize faith communities to do mission-focused development. And finally, we just want to emphasize again that any congregation that wants to make better use of their property must be building relationships in the community with non-members and not be perceived to be overly self-focused and interested. As a council, we seek to model that virtue in everything we do as a way to encourage our congregations across the state of New York to lose their life to find it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Peter. So realizing that we are in a room full of ministers, preachers, clergy folk, we are going to keep an eye on the clock and try to let you know when there's a, at the five-minute mark, as long as we keep going here, just to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to talk. So, next up.
We have Simon McGowan, and after that speaker, Michael Henry Adams.
Good evening. Thank you so much for hosting this event, the second so far, and good to be in our neighborhood here in Harlem. My name is Simon McGowan. I'm a local real estate advisor and owner's representative, working with faith-based organizations and nonprofits. I'm currently working on two listings, which I think are reflective of the neighborhood and kind of where real estate and congregations are going. One is Emaeus, which is on 120th Street. It's an organization that's worked for 50 years to serve the poor by creating a space for the poor to serve one another. It's been a townhouse, serving mostly a food pantry and community brunch. We are looking to sell the house, though, and to take those proceeds to move to another location in the neighborhood. We are serving about 100 families a week, and so we are looking to work with another congregation in the neighborhood who has extra space. And this is also part of the mission of our group, is many congregations have space, and if you're only thinking your mission is on a Sunday morning or Friday night, there are many more hours in the week, and there are many more organizations looking for space to be active in the neighborhood, and ways for your congregation to work with already existing organizations to serve the poor and serve the needy. So if you have space, please let me know after this. But on Peter's note, we want to get the highest dollar number we can, because it's going to be the endowment for this organization to last another 50 years. But in that, it means we can't be mission-focused in still serving the homeless by, you know, selling this property to a lower bidder that might be more low-income focused. So it's a little of an existential question of what to do with property like this. And there are many townhouse churches and congregations in Harlem. Our last count, there's 363 properties north of 110. It's 155th. That is about 5 million square feet of development rights, which translates to about 6,000 two-bedroom apartments that could be built in this neighborhood alone. But to tap into that value is very difficult. We're also visiting another church, which is on 123rd, Greater Metropolitan Baptist. It's built 140 years ago by a German Lutheran congregation. It now serves a congregation of 24 mostly senior citizens. It has a lot of stairs. And it's a landmark building, and it's got, the total square footage you could ever be built on this property is 49,000 square feet. The church takes up 9,000 square feet because it has 60-foot-high sanctuary space. It's overbuilt for its property. There's nowhere left on the land to build housing or build some other use. It really can only ever be a church or congregation-type space. You know, the idea of transferring rights to an adjacent property are not possible because all the properties adjacent are overbuilt as well. And this has come up in previous task force meetings, but I would really recommend that we go with the very similar Midtown East proposal, which is to create a district in Harlem that allows landmark facilities to sell their development rights across the neighborhood, and not just to adjacent properties. The other method of being able to sell your development rights within a block is extremely laborious, extremely transaction, there's a lot of friction in that transaction, and it makes the dollar amount the church can actually gain very low. So I'd please, you know, please consider doing that in the neighborhood. And if you're a congregation looking for a new home, we have an amazing, amazing landmark building that we're looking for someone to take over. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Michael Henry Adams.
It's somewhat dismaying to me to be here this evening because we're in Harlem. And Harlem is the place where African-Americans established the African-American Cultural Mecca a little more than 100 years ago. And the important thing about the African-American community that was established here was the primacy of the black church, this entity that people saw not only as the focal point of their spiritual life, but really the focal point of their lives. It was the combination employment agency, dating service, credit union, Head Start program, that everyone in the black community relied upon. And much like the congregations of immigrants who built spectacular Roman Catholic churches in Harlem, and like the congregations of Jews who came up from the Lower East Side to become uptown Jews in Harlem, and the largest middle-class Jewish community in the United States, and built spectacular synagogues as a focus of their community's pride. Black people, too, established churches that were the focus of their life and therefore were endowed with as much splendor and magnificence as they could afford. And how shocking it is to me that, that being the case, that one has that legacy of the importance of faith and church to people in Harlem, that there should be so few Harlem people here today. And that is particularly in light of the fact that there isn't a week that goes by that a new Harlem church isn't threatened with demolition. Demolition for what purpose? But to build luxury housing for people who don't even live here, for people who sometimes don't even live in the United States. And it just reminds me from my youth that, that biblical text, "What doth it profit a man to gain the whole earth and to lose his mortal soul?" And to think of Christ driving the moneylenders out of the church, and what do we have now but the moneylenders taking over the church and saying, promising people a little space where they can worship in exchange for building buildings, which, in terms of African-Americans, where they can worship in exchange for building buildings which, in terms of African-Americans, will only hasten the day that they will no longer exist because certainly the white people who are buying these apartments and these new condos are not going to be worshiping in these African-American churches. So we have a real existential crisis in Harlem, and one would hope that an opportunity like this would be taken up. But I don't, but where is the Reverend Calvin O'Butz? Where are the great preachers of Harlem seeking to address this looming problem? Solutions. What do you do? Well, for me, of course, as a preservationist, the solution to everything begins and ends with landmarking. Harlem, which has, you know, something like 15% of its buildings protected by landmarking versus Greenwich Village where 2/3 of the buildings are protected by landmarking. But it can't be landmarking alone, of course, and it's already been mentioned, that in Midtown East, the Cathedral of Roman Catholic Archdiocese was recently about to make a deal to sell their air rights, not next door, not behind them, not in front of them, not within the same block, but all the way up several blocks further north for $23 million. They were going to sell their air rights. And they were only able to do that because the zoning had been changed and this mechanism had been created so that not-for-profit landmarks were able to transfer their air rights district-wide. And that is what needs to occur in Harlem. We have got to give people the ability to market something other than the building that they occupy on a Sunday or a Saturday. And we've got to give congregations something to make them more equal when they're dealing with these developers who come promising them the moon and who oftentimes fleece them out of their property and they turn around and they don't know what happened. Because their church is torn down, the developer goes bankrupt, and boom, what do they do? So this is something that is very, very, very important. In particular, and landmarking in general, is something very, very important in Harlem right now. A tragedy getting ready to happen is that the two oldest remaining buildings of the hospital complex have just applied for a demolition permit. Magnificent buildings that look like Park Avenue apartments from the 1930s that were designed by Joseph Friedlander, the architect of the Museum of the City of New York, which they very much resemble the Museum of the City of New York. They're made out of Flemish bond brickwork with carved limestone trimming, and they have steel structures and also lots of asbestos insulation. They'll cost millions of dollars to demolish, and they oughtn't to be demolished. They should be made into housing. And they're going to be knocked down for some of these glass and steel buildings like the ones most recently built by the hospital, which are designed to be obsolete the moment they're built. You know, they're not designed to last beyond 50 years, whereas these buildings made in the 1930s were meant to last forever. And yet, they're about to disappear and for no good reason. And if landmarking was applied in an equitable way via merit, the way it is in the Upper East Side and the Upper West Side and in Greenwich Village and in Park Slope, then we would not be facing this tragedy because they would have been landmarked long, long ago, these buildings. These buildings where Martin Luther King went in with a pinknife right next to his aorta and was saved. And that history alone should be worth these buildings being protected and saved. But everything in Harlem has a dollar price. And for me, as an African-American, thinking of how all of these buildings, all of these churches, represent the culture and heritage, the very identity of my people and me, I think the price is far, far, far too little for what we are getting, which is just places that look like every other place in America and are unworthy of anyone, much less the African-Americans who worked so hard to make this country what it is and who have suffered and still not gotten our due. And to have our heritage destroyed in this piecemeal wholesale way is also something which is unworthy of our nation. And we need to do something immediately and something dramatic like allowing not-for-profits that are landmarked to transfer their air rights so that we can effect the same kind of salvation of architectural heritage that occurred in the theater district when theaters were allowed to transfer their air rights district-wide. And you had theater owners going from decrying the notion of being landmarked to doing everything they could to get their theater landmarked so that they could gain those resources and save their theaters. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Karen Jorgensen and Donna Shaper.
My name is Karen Jorgensen, and since 1988, I've been the director of a 92-bed transitional shelter for men and women 50 years of age and over. And as I've seen, the affordable housing crisis has never been worse in New York City. Daily, I receive calls from elderly on the brink of homelessness because they cannot afford their rent, and I have no remedy for them other than for them to enter the shelter system as the waiting lists for housing they can afford are sometimes as long as 10 years. New York City does not need more market-rate housing. I am a regular Sunday mass-going Roman Catholic, and I am greatly troubled that the Archdiocese of New York has sold off church properties for luxury housing when they should be following Pope Francis and his call for community participation so that Catholic Church properties can be reused for the benefit of the poor. I'm part of a group called the Nativity Committee, which is down on the Lower East Side, and that committee sent a representative to a conference at the Vatican in the past three months, which involved the whole topic of the reuse of Catholic Church properties. And this was something that was recommended by the Vatican, including community participation in what to do with these properties. I'm here really tonight because I'm particularly troubled that the Archdiocese is on the verge of selling Nativity Church on the Lower East Side to a luxury housing developer despite widespread community opposition, including Community Board III. Nativity Church was Dorothy Day's church. It was founded and supported over the years by people of lower and middle income who gave sacrificially so that the parish could stay open. This heritage of giving and sacrifice should be honored by the Archdiocese, not only at Nativity, but at its other decommissioned church properties in Manhattan. I applaud Gail Brewer for initiating the Borough President's Religious Facilities Task Force. I urge the task force to put pressure on the Archdiocese to heed Pope Francis's message by working with community organizations to convert its properties to affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And next, we have Donna.
Thank you, Borough President Brewer, for convening this task force and public hearing on this important issue. I'm Donna Scopper, and I'm Senior Minister of Judson Memorial Church and founder, one of the founders of Bricks and Mortals. Bricks and Mortals is a not-for-profit, citywide organization with the mission of providing creative, sustaining solutions to help houses of worship thrive amidst the costly and challenging landscape of operating in New York City. It's secular, interfaith, and membership-based, and some of our members are here tonight. Our goal is to help houses of faith make informed, unbiased choices about their future. One of the important functions Bricks and Mortals has been playing is as a convener, bringing together religious, professional, and advocacy organizations, working in different ways from different sectors on the challenge of faith institutions staying open and mission-consistent in the context of aging buildings, declining membership, and rising real estate costs. We work closely with the New York State Council of Churches, thank you, Peter, with the Interfaith Assembly on Homelessness and Housing, and the 400 Foundation, among many others, who are leaders on this issue in their own right. We have startup funding from the New York Community Trust to staff our young initiative, and for that, we are very grateful. We have a very open tent, and there are a multitude of ways to get involved with the organization or to get benefit from our resources. Most recently, we've been working with arts institutions to help open up space for artists. There is a place for everyone. Do join us and see me tonight about our next meeting, and be welcome. As has been discussed, the task force and previous speakers, houses of worship are faced with aggressive real estate market pressures, deferred maintenance due to overuse and undercapitalization, and waning membership. It's like everything is happening at once to make real threats to religious buildings. This is combined with increasing community and human needs in New York, for example, the abundant need for affordable housing. This is a public issue, not just a religious issue, which it is also, because to a large degree, important human services are provided across New York through houses of worship. In fact, research shows that houses of worship provide human services far cheaper than any other segment of the city. These institutions have to remain viable and maximize our assets, including real property, both for the purpose of survival and for the greater benefit of their communities so that they can continue to be who they are. Additionally, many of us are interested in pre-development assistance in order to fully consider how we can stop gentrification and its best friend, racism, by building low- and middle-income housing for our great city. Alone, we can't do this kind of development. With strategic help, we can. In order to realize these multiple and interacting opportunities, there are problems at first glance, but they're also opportunities. We need help from public institutions to do our public work. Finally, it's imperative that diverse religious institutions are brought into this process and that our feedback is heard because no one can know the specific needs but the community itself. We are doing a very wise thing in this gathering. It's forward-looking. It may be a little late, but it's looking ahead, and it's the right way to look. We often say in other movements, "Nothing about us without us." Well, here we are. Here we are, and we don't know everything, but we do know something. So a few policy possibilities. And we don't claim to know what they all are yet. We just know that we can't allow religious institutions to become part of the problem of gentrification and racism. It is mission-inconsistent. We're not here for that. We're here for better things. So, one, the public needs to be educated on the secular value of religious institutions. Hear me, the secular value of religious institutions. We have marvelous spiritual value, too. I'm not denying that. But the public doesn't need to support our spiritual values. It needs to support our secular value. Through the halo effect, houses of worship give back to their local communities an average of $1.7 million per congregation per year. That is a big number. My congregation, and yes, I'm going to brag about Judson Memorial Church, gives back nearly $11 million per year in secular services for every million we spend. These are bargains, people. These are bargains. Secondly, technical assistance and policy changes are needed that are responsive to the reality of religious institutions. Incentivizing the help of these valuable resources creates opportunities instead of obstacles. Specifically, support is needed for the financial health of religious institutions. Capital funding. Capital funding. We are in great need. I'm moving along. We need to support access to discretionary and capital-funding processes. These processes are ridiculously hard and arduous, and if you want to put a small organization out of business, try to get them to apply to some of this funding that's available. Help us with that. And with regard to the new environmental law requiring retrofitting, religious institutions are not exempt, and these changes are very costly. Though it is in faith institutions' best interests to become environmentally improved and accessible, both of which are a public good, we need support to make these things happen. We are not able to do it on our own. Borough President Eric Adams in Brooklyn has gotten very involved with the kind of detailed work involved here. Congregations that don't know their water bill, congregations that don't know how to fill out the forms, congregations that don't know that they're in violation of some code or another. We also think that we need resources for community-based asset mapping so that faith institutions can maximize resources within their communities and are not acting within a vacuum. This can be done by council district and could analyze unused air rights or underused space within buildings. Development potential and community organizations that need space can join with us. Another solution that we could support, once it was studied, regards sole sourcing of city-owned property for development. When the city owns property and sells it, it can either sole-source the property or put out an RFP. A policy should exist whereby if the city is going to sell property, it should give a right of first offer, refusal, to any faith institution that is adjacent to or could transfer air rights to such a property. And finally, air rights. I'm glad it's come up. It's a very, very complex and moral issue, as well as a hard public policy issue. It is clear that locations for religious facilities to sell air rights should be expanded. However, it is also abundantly clear that this needs to be balanced with incentives for mission-consistent development. This could potentially include prohibitions on mission-inconsistent sales of religious properties to high-end developers without a tax that benefits the faith institution's original missions and their secular counterparts. Religious institutions are at a point of crisis in New York. With the right tools and resources, we can make choices for our own futures. By the way, God is not in trouble. God will be fine. I don't know how yet, but religious institutions really need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen, Donna. We currently have four people signed up, so if you are interested in signing up, please fill out a sheet so that you can join the queue. And if you have written prepared remarks, we also ask that if you are willing to turn them in in the back, we would appreciate collecting them. them in in the back, we would appreciate collecting them. And just as a reminder, if you do not feel comfortable speaking publicly, or if you have issues facing your congregation that you're not willing to share on a public forum, we do again encourage you to submit them in writing or connect with one of us after the session.
Now, we'd like to call up Valerio Orselli, and after him, Jason LaBate.
Good evening to everyone who made it their priority to be here on a cold rainy night to speak about a very important topic, which is the problem we're faced, as we can see, not just on the Lower East Side of Manhattan, but Harlem, East Harlem, and other neighborhoods, which is the disposition of formerly religiously-owned property to the highest bidder for luxury housing and condo conversion. I'm very appreciative, and the Lower East Side and CB3 are very appreciative of the initiative taken by the Borough President to establish the Religious Facilities Task Force. I believe that there are reasonable concerns by religious facilities in terms of maintaining their financial viability, as well as there are the needs to preserve our communities, our working-class communities, and communities of color, to keep them as whole and intact as possible, in the spirit of compromise and cooperation. I think it's a great idea, and as you know, I've been participating at every meeting of the task force. Sad to say, that spirit of compromise does not seem to extend to the New York Archdiocese. I was mentioned by a prior speaker. The New York Archdiocese has made final plans to sell the Church of the Nativity on the Lower East Side, 442nd Avenue, for $40 million, which means conversion to luxury condos. In my position as Director of Cooper Square Community Land Trust, working with the Catholic Worker and Cooper Square Committee, we have made an offer of $18.5 million for the property, so it could be demolished and rebuilt as housing for seniors, the disabled, and homeless. In the spirit of Dorothy Day, the co-founder of the Catholic Worker, who was a parishioner of Nativity Church, I find it ironic that at the same time that they are selling the church that was associated with Dorothy Day, they are canonizing Dorothy Day because of her services to the homeless and the poor. I commend that effort, but do not commend their effort to sell Nativity and other churches in our neighborhood and elsewhere for luxury condo. We sent a letter, myself, signed by me and by Martha Hennessy, the granddaughter of Dorothy Day, requesting a meeting with the Cardinal. Not the first time we requested a meeting, and to date, he has turned us down. The only response to our offer, besides saying that it was too low, you know, we offered $18.5 million over a period of time, is that a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow, which might make sense in real estate, but doesn't seem to have any of the spirit of Christ and service to the poor. I would like to urge the Borough President to use their offices to first bring the New York Diocese, the New York Archdiocese, into active participation in the task force that you have established, from which they're noticeably absent, even if they are centrist representative, and to also, along with other political officials, request an urgent meeting with the Cardinal to talk about this issue, Nativity, and also the other, many other churches that are being decommissioned throughout the city and being sold for luxury condo, which we have deemed, in my letter, in our letter signed by me and Martha, a sordid use, and try to have them comply with the spirit of Christ and Dorothy Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Val.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason LaBate. I'm a Senior Associate at Goldstein Hall, P L L C. It's a law firm and a certified B Corporation, which focuses primarily on affordable housing and community development. And it seems that this issue is at the intersection of both, affordable housing and community development in Manhattan. I am also a member of Bricks and Mortals and a partner with many of the previous speakers. I'm not sure that I will contribute anything new, but I will certainly add my voice to those that have spoken thus far. For the past seven years, I've worked closely with faith-based institutions throughout New York City, including Manhattan, on leases, licenses, space-sharing agreements, and new construction, including market rate, affordable, and mixed-use development. The truth is that many faith-based institutions are burdened by buildings that were built not only in a different era, but for a different era. These buildings were built for a time when the question wasn't whether you belonged to a congregation, but which congregation you belong to. Well, over the years, congregations have aged and dwindled, as have the buildings that house them. I submit my written testimony, along with several articles that were published in the New York Times and Crane's New York, demonstrating this issue. The deferred maintenance and the deterioration of buildings that house our congregations and houses of worship have ultimately led to their demise and the city's loss. Something must be done, and I thank the Borough President for bringing attention to what I think most of us consider as a crisis. Faith-based institutions were the original providers of not only spiritual support, but charitable support. They predate our expansive government and not-for-profit support networks that exist today. Chances were, back in the day, if you received food, shelter, or care, it came through a faith-based institution. Today, these institutions are still providing these services, frequently without any state or city support. As has been said, as Donna eloquently set forth, there are halo studies demonstrating the benefits to a community of a faith-based institution, and these benefits are measured in millions of dollars, in some cases, tens of millions of dollars, per year. These institutions provide food, security, art spaces, temporary shelter, meeting spaces for community and anonymous groups, and the list goes on. Not only are these faith-based organizations going out of business, but the void they leave, particularly in Manhattan, as has been stated, is filled with luxury condos. This reality is a double whammy to the history and diversity of this great city and this great borough. In a time when Manhattan is becoming less affordable, the institutions that serve and support the most needy are being pushed out and replaced by new buildings that hasten the displacement of these populations and the unaffordability of this city. Something must be done. I believe that faith-based institutions contribute to the fabric, culture, and welfare of this great borough and this great city. These institutions have and continue to do so much for this city, and it is time that the city made a concerted effort to return the favor. I hope that the Borough President and our elected leaders will engage in the following. This is not an exhaustive list, but it is my short list of things that I hope that this task force will recommend and that our elected officials will undertake. I think that we all agree that there is something going very, very wrong here, but I don't know that we know the extent of that, of this illness. So, I request that we establish just how many faith-based organizations the city and the borough has lost over the past 10 years. And then I think it's necessary to establish how many faith-based organizations and buildings are at risk of being lost in the next year, the next five years, and the next 10 years because of deferred maintenance, because of tax bills, because of water bills, because they're unable to use their property for their charitable purpose because they can't afford to use it. To provide referrals and links to faith-based organizations and to professionals that can help these organizations utilize their properties for mission and financial support, organizations like Bricks and Mortals and the New York State Council of Churches. Open the doors to grant opportunities and city programs to secular work of religious organizations, and bring these organizations into the conversation with city officials about the city's needs and about their needs. And then lastly, connect these organizations with city agencies that support and regulate them, and the other organizations in the city that can use, develop, program, and breathe new life into these religious spaces in a spirit of partnership with these faith-based organizations. And not listed here, but in a sixth, would be grant support for convening organizations and technical expertise organizations like Bricks and Mortals. As Donna said, this is a nascent, growing organization that I truly believe in, that I think will do a lot of good work, but it needs financial support to do that work. So, in closing, I look forward to the results of the Borough President's report, and I thank her, her team, and the NYU Wagner School of Public Service and its capstone team who is supporting the Borough President for their time and attention to this matter, and I look forward to their recommendations.
Thank you, Jason.
Next, we have Hazen Kyler, Valerie Bradley, and then George Lee Mills.
Hello. I'll be a little bit more brief. I don't have a speech written for today, but my name is Hazen Kyler. I'm the artistic director of a theater, film, art, and music company called The Greenhouse Ensemble. And what we do at Greenhouse is we cultivate a positive, judgment-free environment where artists of any discipline create fully-realized work. We work all out of different venues in Manhattan, and our latest project, we're working alongside Goddard Riverside Community Centers, as well as two other churches on the Upper West Side, to create an Upper West Side Theater and Arts District. And what we're planning on doing for that is taking different artists, visual artists, musicians, theater artists, begin to filter and curate them into these different religious institutions that maybe are looking for a greater attendance or looking for a different kind of audience to come to them, to help to support not just the artists, but the religious institutions. So, that's what we're working on right now, and I told you this was going to be rather brief. I'll be sticking around afterward if you'd like to talk about it at all, but thank you all for listening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Call up Valerie. Valerie Bradley.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Valerie Bradley, and I'm President of Save Harlem Now, which is a not-for-profit advocacy organization dedicated to protecting, preserving, and celebrating Harlem's irreplaceable built heritage. Our advocacy is not merely limited to saving individual outstanding structures, but includes preserving contextual buildings, landscapes, and other elements that contribute to define Harlem's sense of place and special character. Outdated and inappropriate zoning has resulted in numerous large-scale and out-of-context developments that are unsympathetic to Harlem's traditionally low-rise and low-to-mid-density neighborhoods. Recent rezoning proposals have led to the erasure of entire blocks and the disappearance of small businesses, as we have noted, on 125th Street. The East Harlem Upzoning Proposal by Mayor de Blasio threatens to allow taller buildings that will make the neighborhood more dense, less affordable, and ultimately unrecognizable. Also, struggling religious properties that are owned by dwindling congregations that are burdened by lack of funding have become attractive sites that developers aggressively pursue to build more unaffordable housing. Save Harlem Now is concerned about the threat to historic churches, which have become sought-after assets to developers, resulting in demolition, more out-of-context development, and an influx of newcomers that exacerbate the effects of gentrification. We have been successful in raising awareness about Harlem churches in peril by generating media coverage, holding community forums and conferences, and working with affected parishioners and neighbors. However, the threat continues to loom large, as we have documented the loss of about 120 faith-based institutions in the past 10 to 20 years. We hope to broaden the dialogue with elected officials and various city agencies and church leadership about whether Harlem churches can benefit from a tax credit transfer program similar to the Midtown East rezoning program, which allows St. Patrick's Cathedral, St. Bartholomew Church, and Central Senegal to sell and transfer unused development rights to a much wider range of sites than before. We applaud the Manhattan Borough President for working with us on the issue of saving Harlem churches, and we understand the caution about transferring development tax credits. However, we invite you to continue working with us to find workable solutions to save Harlem churches from the wrecking balls. The African-American churches led the movement to Harlem at the turn of the 20th century. Let us not abandon them in the 21st century.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is George Lee Miles, and I'm pretty much a product of Harlem, although I was born in the South. I'm a gulligichi boy from off the coast of Charleston, South Carolina. But I arrived here in Harlem in 1951. I lived on the same block where James Baldwin's family was and where Sylvia, who's a popular restaurant throughout America now, their family were on the block as well. At that time, James Baldwin, at my estimation, he was already in France writing "Gottelit on the Mountain." Over time, I would meet him later on and spend a little time with him. His brother David was in our theater group. I come out of the theater experience, a part of what was called the Black Arts Movement here. I'm an aqualyte of Amiri Baraka, Leroy Jones, and the Nublavia Theater, which took the old Renaissance theater, which has now just been built into apartment buildings. Oddly enough, our other theater, which burned down in January of 1968 by the same realtors, have also been taken, the same realtors have also taken over the building that we, where our theater burned down, at 131st Street, 132nd Street, and Adam Clayton Powell Jr. Boulevard. So, we have a kind of a connection with the real estate development that has been going on here. I'd just like to say that, first of all, Manny L. Wilson was a red cap. He worked moving luggage in Pennsylvania Station. He was also one of our great pastors, and it was really Manny L. Wilson of Convent Avenue Baptist Church who bought the school on 145th Street and several buildings around there before he made his transition, before he died, not Abyssinian. Many of the things that happened in our neighborhood and that we're looking at now is a part of a process that's really a hundred-year, more than a hundred-year process, and we've kind of been caught behind the ball. St. Philip's Episcopal Church was the first largest property developer in Harlem when they bought several buildings on the northern side of 135th Street, between Adam Clayton Powell Jr. Boulevard and Malcolm X Boulevard, which we used to call Lenox Avenue, some people still do. So, St. Philip's Episcopal Church processed the land, and it was the development of the land and property which happened to influence the movement of people after they built the train along Park Avenue that allowed people to move further north. And as those people who were down north, being the And as those people who were down north, being the Jewish people of many backgrounds who wanted to get away from the other Jewish people who were just coming in, because you know them new people coming in, they look funny, they act funny, they talk funny, and God, what is that stuff they eating? So they want to get away. So as the train is developing on Park Avenue, they start to move further uptown, Reformed Jews, they're called. Many of our churches now that are Baptist churches were synagogues at the turn of the century. So our life and history is one, particularly those of us of African heritage, we are people who have been in this nation ever since it began, and we have been in this city ever since it began. So our movement has always been one that every time that somebody wanted to use the land and take the property, we had to move. Harlem became a very particular thing because as they started to move up to Harlem, our old neighborhood was down by Lincoln Center, San Juan Hill. I have friends, one who just made his transition, who always say, "I don't come from Harlem, I come from San Juan Hill." He come from down by Lincoln Center, before they built Lincoln Center. Before that, we come from down in the Tunderloin, before they built Pennsylvania Station. Okay? So our life and history has been one of moving up the island, having been here ever since it began. You know, we owned land in SoHo, what is now called SoHo. We owned land in Chinatown. We were in Chinatown 100 years before the Chinese arrived. We owned property there. So everything comes down to property. Who occupies the land at any given place and time? We have been those who have lost our property because when the British took over after the Dutch, who did allow us to own a little bit of property, when the British came, they said, "You can't own nothing. You can't have nothing, and all your children belong to us in perpetuity." That's what they call chattel slavery. So we spent 350 years under that, and another 100 years, more than 100 years, which we continue now, in what continues to be a mental effort in slavery. Our churches have been our most established and most standing communities. I represent a church, I'm the church historian of a church that's going into its 87th year now. That's 87 years, nearly 100 years. We're struggling. They haven't been able to respond to the, and a term was used when Brother Michael was speaking, that I noticed that when they interpreted, when they rewrote it, they wrote something else, but he said fleece. And somehow, when they typed it in, they had some other kind of interpretation of what Michael Henry Adams said. Whoa! So there we have continual interpretation of who we are, where we are, and what condition we're in. We who are here, we who have been here, we have been in this land of America ever since it began, you can count the so-called Native American or whatever, we don't want to call them, nobody knows what they call them because they didn't call them Indians, they didn't call themselves Indians. And they kind of came over the Bay Area straight, too. You know what I'm saying? But we who have been here on this land and this property, who were denied the right to inherit and who to work, as we were working, as Malcolm X said, the America's most honest, most able workers, were denied the right to become a part of the economy. And this is continuing in its own way and in its own prospect now. You know? So the church that I represent, Way to Central Baptist Church on 132nd Street and 5th Avenue, 5th Avenue is moving uptown. You know? Reverend Minnie Canyon, her congregation was declining. After she passed, her siblings or her children sold the church for, I think, somewhere near under $1 million. In that building now on 127th Street and 5th Avenue, I think they have $4 million condominium apartments. So we talk about whether we want to landmark and whether that creates an advantage for some of us, perhaps. We certainly have to do something because, see, the name of the game is this has been going on for a long time. You see, in the early days of the turn of the century, they call it slum clearance. By the time we got into the, after World War II, you started to hear about something called Upper West Side Urban Renewal. And it kind of stopped after Lindsay was the mayor. It stopped at 110th Street. They built a couple of apartment buildings down there where people could have only earned $60,000, and it stopped because the dope and all that kind of things was hanging on there, was moving through our communities and stuff like that. And the Godfather tells you the story. They stand up at the meeting and said, "All this money to be made, we got to make the money. We wouldn't give it to our children. That would be an abomination. You know? We wouldn't put it in our neighborhoods. We'll give it to the coloreds. They're savages anyway, so let them lose their souls." I made an appearance in a film with a guy named Frank Lucas, who spent a lifetime making over $200, $300 million selling heroin in Harlem. So yeah, now I see a building that used to be a crack building on 119th, 120th Street and 8th Avenue, Frederick Dulles Boulevard, that now has condominium, a penthouse on the top floor for $4.1 million. So it's about real estate. It's always been about the real estate, about the property, about the movement of people. Who occupies the land at any given place and time? Anybody who's looking, anybody who's been aware, anybody who's been honestly looking at things, they would realize that the plan was that by the time the commercial street started to move uptown from Canal Street, Canal Street was really a canal. It was really water there, but as the neighborhood started to expand, they filled in the waterway, and people started to move beyond because so many people were coming in. There ain't no city like New York City on the face of the earth. More than 250, nearly 300 different languages are spoken here. When I come up, all these different people weren't here then. So all the people that's coming in, coming in, coming in, and other people who are doing better for themselves, they want to move away from it. So they moved further up on the island, they moved further into the other spaces in the five boroughs of New York. So this is who we are, where we are, and what condition we're in. We're in that situation now, where we're looking at the changing prospects of our life and history here, of what we love to call our neighborhood, but the name of the game is if you don't got a piece of land, and anybody who's selling a piece of land in Harlem is out of his mind. And what our churches have been doing, because they have been struggling so, or because they got greedy pastors or whatever, have been selling the land. I tried to make a deal with a friend of mine who made a deal with Reverend Dr. Julius Clay. He leased the land. He leased the land. The church still owns the land. That makes them real estate property owners. Yeah, they built the new church, and they built a fancy building that you can't even tell, there's a church built inside, but he got a brand-new church built inside with all the accoutrements that he would think that they needed for the church. My church is now talking about they need security. Yeah, $90 million has come down from the government now. We can maybe get some of that if we get involved for security, but security for what? Because we got a lot of tourists coming there that outnumber the parishioners of the church. So we're struggling. We're in a struggling set of circumstances. I welcome Ms. Brewer and this opportunity that she shows us, and that Michael also mentions, too, that there's other ways of doing this, possibly of air rights, which first came when they built the Waldorf Astoria. You know, 10, 12 blocks spread out with dirty trains and smoke everywhere and stuff like that until 17 people died in a tunnel. Then they realized, we got to do something about this. So they got William J. Wilgus, great engineer, who took all of those 10, 12 blocks of smoke and bring them together to 67, 67 set of tracks under now what's called Grand Central Station. Now that we've built it all underground now, you can build over it. That's your first sale of air rights. If you look at the Waldorf Astoria, you walk along the side, you see down there, it doesn't have a basement because it sits up on steel rails. Because all of those trains running underneath could rumble the building. This is what we're dealing with. So what are we going to do? So he's calling me on now. I'm going to get on out of here. But we're from the New Lafayette Theater. We have just come together again. I'm looking to develop some programs in mental health here because that's becoming an issue here, and we look to find different kinds of ways of making partnerships, that we can try to find some way to preserve our own life and history because we've been here all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. So that was our last signed-up speaker. We are about 20 minutes left of our time. If there is anybody who wants to come up and spend a couple moments that has not signed up to speak, we invite you up to the microphone at this point. And please introduce yourself and who you're with.
Thank you so much to the Borough President for holding this meeting. My name is Stephanie Douglas. I am the Chair of Church Council for St. Paul and St. Andrew United Methodist Church. I just wanted to say first, thank you for the resources that you put online. They were really helpful for someone who is not as well-versed or understanding of this issue. Very much like Judson Memorial, our church is, we are mission-consistent, we are a secular and interfaith space, but we are considered a religious building, a landmarked religious building. My concern, or what I'm looking for, is a way to almost reframe, for the public, but also for policy, what happens with money that goes to religious institutions. We have so many things that are happening that are secular things in our building. We have a preschool, we have West Side Campaign Against Hunger, we have Narcotics and Alcoholics Anonymous, we have a theater space, we have three church congregations that share the space, but also Jewish congregations. We are a shelter that we hold with Bene Gesserit. We are a voting site. We are a movie and TV holding site. We have Pilates, we have cooking for gems. So I guess there's part of me that when people hear that religious institutions get a tax break, or that you are giving discretionary funds to religious-based organizations, that there is almost a cutoff for people who don't practice faith or, you know, have a different faith. I want to be, hope that the Borough President is able to shift, maybe vernacular, that also goes with policy, just for these mixed-use buildings like ours, because our roof is literally falling in. So I just wanted to put that out. I did also have a question that I put to you, and I don't, I can sit down while you answer it, but I was wondering if any landmarked religious building has tried to be a community land trust, and what examples you have for us on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To my awareness, there has not been any specific religious facility that has attempted to become a community land trust. For those of you who may not know what a community land trust is, that is a organization, non-for-profit organization, that maintains ownership of the land, whereas the buildings or the properties on top may be used for housing, usually in perpetuity, permanently affordable housing, or other types of means, including down in the South, there was kind of a worker collective farming community, and there are various uses of the model. But I'm not aware of any institutions in New York City that has reorganized as a community land trust, which tends to have residents, community leaders, and experts on the board, which was what makes up the governance structure of CLTs. But there are examples, which was mentioned by Mr. Miles and others, in which the religious property has maintained ownership of the land where something else was built on top of it. So the ground lease model is something that has occurred, but not specifically the community land trust model. Anybody else would like to say any comments? Nope? Would you like to say a few words, Borough President? Does anybody else want to say anything before we hear from the Borough President?
So thank you, Matt. I want to thank Stephanie and all the folks in the office who have made this possible, but I am Gail Brewer, I am the Borough President, and we've been struggling with these issues for maybe 10 years now. And the fact that so many ideas have surfaced and continue to surface as part of the task force and will be part of our recommendations, there are no easy answer. The frustrating part is we cannot, as understandably as government, fix the roof of St. Paul and St. Andrew or anybody else. We are looking closely at the air rights. When I was with Councilmember Dan Grodnick and City Planning Commission, the East Midtown possibility, where, as you heard earlier, air rights can be transferred within that area, that is something to look at. Who is the receiving site? That is always the issue. And how do we go about that? I want to also state that right now, as we sit here, nativity is an issue, but in addition, the Episcopal's have, as Michael knows and Valerie knows, they have some churches that they want to fix up, tear down, pay for one, using the funds of another. It's very frustrating. I am just like you. I love the church building itself, the synagogue building itself. It's not just churches, synagogues are, in many cases, in the same situation. So the question for us is, can we do this with air rights? Can we do this with, sometimes, as St. Paul and St. Andrew has done, with OMB dollars going into a nonprofit in the building? That is possible to do. Can we also figure out how to use repurposing? These are hard issues, and I can't thank you enough for figuring out with us how to go about it. There has to be a solution. In the borough of Manhattan, thanks to Beta NYC, there are something close to, I don't know, 200, Stephanie knows better than I, 200, 300 non-landmarked faith-based buildings. Many of them could, in fact, be repurposed, keeping the building itself and also doing affordable housing. Many of them have land around them. There are so many possibilities, but there has to be a will and there has to be pressure. So we're going to ask you not only to be here tonight, but when we figure out what the advocacy is that you agree with, we desperately need your help in making that possible. So I'm just, I'm here to say thank you. I think these are not issues that I, I'm very familiar with these issues. We've been struggling with how to go about making a difference. There are 913 parcels identified as religious facilities by the Department of Finance and the Department of Buildings. It's about 7 million square feet, and of course, billions of dollars in real property value. It's 13% of Manhattan is religious facilities, just to give you an idea of how much is involved. So I thank you for being here, and I can promise you that we're not giving up on trying to figure out what to do. I don't think anybody else is doing that except you, so it's not like we're duplicating another effort. I'm glad that my colleague in Brooklyn is doing it, and I love Eric Adams, but he has, does not have a goddamn task force, and he's not doing it with you like we are. I used the wrong word with all of you religious people in the world. But thank you, and we look forward to trying to figure out the steps that are mission-driven for you as religious leaders and also policy-driven for the people of our city. Thank you very much. Thank you, Matthew, and thank you, Stephanie. Those are the real people to thank up there, so thank you so much.
Yes, we are finished. If you have any comments that you want to submit in writing in the back, please turn them in, and if you would like to submit any comments online, the email address is rftf@manhattanbp.gov. Thank you, oh, .nyc.gov. Thank you so much, and have a great night.